You've got mail.
We'll start with that.
The pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have the minutes for us for the December 7th meeting.
I make a motion we approve minutes for December 7th.
Second.
All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Then we have payroll amount of $176,729.71.
I've got the Jean's all passover.
Okay.
I make a motion we approve payroll in the amount of $176,729.71.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Then we have to acknowledge receipt of payroll claims account payable report in the amount of $617,508.82. It's the end of the year, you can tell.
Yep.
$280,000 of the self insurance for back pay.
Yes.
Yeah.
If nobody has any questions, I make a motion we acknowledge a receipt of payroll claims accounts payable in the amount of $617,508.82.
And I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we have several hand typed checks here, we can go through those pretty quickly. We just go through them and we'll approve them all together if that works for you guys. We have a traveler's check. That was a settlement thing for 1771. We have a bill to Deckard. Oh, it's on farther than the list, okay, they're out of order, but go down the first one there was the traveler 7071. The next to the bottom is Deckard Engineering for $2,800. That was from the surveyor for some work he had done.
Yep.
Next is Jeff Norman. He, this is for building the storage cabinets out at the eminent service for the protection equipment. And then we have Adult Clinic Services, just a regular bill of $685 to the family health and help center. Then Quill, just a payment on a balance due for $312.85. And then the sign center, if you notice the sign out front when you came in, the sign is up for the annex of one. And that is $3,055. And that's all I have, so I make a motion that we approve the out of cycle checks as presented.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. Okay. All right, next up we have a resolution. But that's what I just signed a while ago, right?
That's what came by the office and signed as to...
Right, so we just need to get it tested, that's what we have to do.
It needs a test, it needs a resolution number assigned to it.
Okay, you'll take care of that. He's saying the 27th, but not sure, so I'll check those and see.
Yeah, I didn't know what that was. But yeah, it just needs to test it and then another sign.
Okay, we have to, an additional on the insurance. I don't understand why it's not covering insurance, but it's not, it's for telemedicine. There's about a $3,000 charge, I think is what it was, for that services to have telemedicine covered for people as well. And a lot of you don't have choice now, you have a doctor appointment, you're probably going to go telemedicine on that. And so we have to make sure that's covered, so we just need an approval to approve the additional fee to Yamar for the telemedicine.
All right, well, I scheduled a cardiology appointment today and she wanted to do it.
Yep.
Zoo or telemedicine, so that's fine, I don't have to go to Indianapolis. Nothing wrong with that, so I think if we can do it to help other people.
It will.
It's a good thing, so I make a motion that we approve the amendment to the health insurance to include telemedicine.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, then we have Cindy.
So, the reference to cars here has to do with the grant, which was the connecting, or communities connecting people with disabilities grant. There is a sub-receiving agreement that the county and cars need to sign for Oprah that just shows the county is the leading applicant, when the funds come in, they will actually go to cars to spend. And there's a lot of language, I've had Nick look at it, he's comfortable that there's nothing crazy in there.
Okay.
So it does require signatures from the county.
So it's basically a pass through, so I re-sign where the draft key and then...
We'll definitely want a final copy back though, because it doesn't like, I didn't have anything on the term of the agreement or the dollar amount or anything like that.
It's, yeah.
So they'll fill it out, is my understanding, and then it gets submitted, but we'll definitely want to see the final copy.
Okay.
Because the terms aren't input into it yet.
Okay, so we don't want to sign it today?
Well, I don't know if they have a deadline or what.
Yeah, we do need it signed today, because the applications are due January the 10th.
Okay.
So we do need it, the, a dollar amount's $200,000, that's the max of the grant. So there would be nothing above that.
And no match?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
No match required for that.
So Nick, is there a reason not to sign it today? Or should we make it contingent upon your approval?
Well, I guess you guys sign it, but I'd like to see the executed copy before they send it to Oprah, I guess, would be the only thing. Just to make sure that, you know...
That'd be my motion, that we approve the signing of the grant application here contingent upon Nick seeing the final copy before it's sent to Oprah.
And I'll second that.
Just, just because they're filling in the content, the actual draft is standard stuff.
Okay, I think it's good, I'm glad you're watching, yeah.
Yeah, so the only fill-ins will be the names of the park county commissioners, the cars, and then the dollar amount, the $200,000.
Will determine what agreement would be in there too.
Well, it's not anything to be paid out, it's the execution of spent funds as if received by Oprah. And that has a 12-month period on it.
No, I understand, there's just, there's several things that are going to be filled in, it just makes me squeamish.
You just want to see before they actually send it in.
It's a...
I understand, that's why we hire you, to be squeamish, yeah.
Yeah, and there's no reason that you guys wouldn't get a copy once it's all completed.
Okay, so the motion is that we'll approve that contingent upon using before the final copy, after you've filled in all the spaces before it's sent in, so that's what we'll do then.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
In addition to that, there's another page, that's the submission page for the application itself, that's separate than the sub-receiving. It's just a standard thing where me as a grant admin signs, commissioner signs, and then the recipient with sign.
Okay.
Signing signature on that as well.
Let us have those, we approved it and we'll go ahead and sign it.
So they should have tabs there for you, yeah.
Okay.
And I thought while I was here doing that today, the other grant that you gave us the okay to pursue was the Oprah Phase 3 COVID Relief Grant, where we were investigating potential topics for that. I think we've settled in working with a couple of people from, to the extension, on doing the in Park County Food Security Alliance, so that's gathering all of our food cantries, our backpack programs, our churches, anybody that's doing food supply for the community, that that be our target. And instead of trying to pick and choose one or the other, I've got someone working with all of those, creating this alliance.
Okay.
So that would be the recipient of this other grant. So it'll be called, I think it's going to be called the Park County Food Alliance, is the name. We've had a conversation with the community foundation in which they would be the pass-through entity, since they're a 501(c)(3). So I, I need that same form for that grant, so I was going to ask if he would be comfortable going ahead. Or, knowing Jim, you're going to be out of town, this is a grant that's, the application is due end of January.
Okay.
Proposal is, so it's going to ask if you might want to sign that today, contingent on the same things we did with...
Sure, I can do that.
You know, that fill-in.
We just need, do we need a motion then for that?
So this will be a separate one.
Grant, okay, what's that grant referred to as for the motion?
It is the COVID Response Phase 3.
Okay, so I'd make a motion that we accept the COVID Response Phase 3 grant request as presented?
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so I can sign it.
And if, I was going to ask too, that there'll be additional documents to sign with that, Jim, that I don't have readily available today.
That's okay.
Upon your absence, or Bruce and Dan and...
Yep, either.
You guys are good, as long as...
Or you can always...
Right now that I can come to you to...
Or you can always scan it, sit down and we have a sign and send it back.
On vacation, I don't want to be back.
I'll be working every day.
Who's first vice president?
Danny's.
I guess technically he'd be the...
That'd be, that'd work.
One that wears the burden.
That'd work.
Well, I try to get them all at like, one or two settings to sign things, but there will be other documents. So that takes care of all my grants, I'll give, if I may ask you one question while I'm up here, and then I'll get out of the room for you. Because you know we're working on this Leon grant.
Mm-hmm.
So, on the property, this is outside the LAV hospital piece. This is actually about, probably less than an acre. It's in the middle of Mr. Wankoo's property. There's a parcel that's in the name of Park County, Indiana. We're assuming that's perhaps where the sanatorium bridge was, perhaps at one time.
Okay.
So it's actually deeded in the name of Park County, Indiana.
Is it west of the parcel, the bridge and then?
So, knowing that he's selling his property, we're also trying to do a sealed bid on the seven acres with the hospital. What would you want to do with that little piece of property there? I've talked to one gentleman that's putting in an offer to buy Wankoo's property. He's the one that has asked the question if the county would want to sell that as well.
Is there a reason not to include that in our other properties that we own?
I see what she said, it's going to be landlocked if the other guy don't sell his. My opinion would be to hang on to it, if one person buys them both, then they should get it too.
And I didn't know from a legal perspective how we could...
Yeah.
So it's a lot easier if we're selling it to jointing landowners than it is if we're selling it outright to the public? Because then you have to go through the bidding process, which you know.
Have appraisals for that.
But, so I guess the question would be how much is the property worth? As long as it's worth less than $6,000, it's not going to be much of a pain for us.
And it's, it's under government exemption right now, so I'd have to pull the property.
Is it on both sides of the creek?
Yeah.
I thought it would, would be.
I mean, he's over that figure, we can go through the process.
Oh, I don't think it'd be anyway, I don't think it'd even come close to that.
Yeah, so it's real similar to what we did with...
There's nothing, nothing till, there's nothing tillable, there's concrete abutments in the way, there's water going through it, so there's no value to it there probably at all.
It doesn't quite very well.
I would hate to turn it over and then...
Yeah.
Someone get, and it's not connected here either, so...
Yeah, that would've been the hope, nice thing, we could've just connected to our property, but it's not.
I mean, my opinion is, it bids January 26th, wait till after the bid and make the decision then if someone buys both pieces.
Okay, well, that was just a question that came from the gentleman making the offer on one piece of...
How many, how many do we have interested in the property now? I know of two, is that where we are?
Probably three.
Great.
At this time.
Great.
I've had specific inquiries from two, I haven't heard from the, from the lady that you sent to meet, Dan.
Which one, there was two I sent to you, Brittany would have been the last.
Brittany, I haven't heard back from them, we emailed the list. But I know the gentleman I met with Friday, he's actively putting in an offer for Wankoo's property and...
What's his name?
His name is Greg Larson.
Yes, I talked to him.
He's a developer, he said he's spoken to you before.
Yep.
He's a developer out of Illinois, has, you know,...
Got good plans for it, yeah.
...perspective, so.
Yep.
And we've got interest on some of the other parcels on the list as well.
Good.
I just wanted to ask what the plans were for that, and I'll help him advise him.
We want it all to go and get on the tax roll, we made something.
We have no intention of keeping it, if, pretty much, I'd like to see all of it go back together and get back on the tax roll and be done.
For Cindy, this is here.
It should probably be easier to do it afterwards, than where it's still if they're joining the landowners.
Yeah, so I need...
Do I need to sign this both places?
The part where it has...
I signed where you filled out my name, and there's, has another chief executive officer, that's different?
That's a different...
Okay, here you go.
Thank you. And I hope, can I get all those back?
Jim holds on to stuff a lot, so...
Yeah, I saved, I saved you, you still owe me for that one, Betty. I couldn't believe I had it either, so you've got to be kidding me, I always hold this stuff right?
I've got you guys copies of this.
I was going to ask you about that.
Before we go to transient merchant license, let's just do this, we had already looked at this ordinance for replacing the stop signs in Bridgeton, but Nick had to revise that and bring it up to the right wording for the right signs. He has now, so, did that have an ordinance number before?
I don't think we assigned the ordinance to, because...
Do you know what the next one would be yet?
Next ordinance is 2020-26.
Okay, 26.
Because we were looking at the mapping and being corrected the mapping for us.
Yes.
And so we corrected mapping's attached, but in doing that, I didn't like a little bit of the wording when I started.
So we would need the same day, same meeting for this as well, right?
Well, we read it at the previous meeting.
We did.
So...
We just square the ordinance in the way it is?
Yeah.
Then I make a motion we approve ordinance 2020-26, an ordinance designated and placing the stop signs in Bridgeton.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, did it, next thing I have is I had a request from Roy Reichman. Roy, as you know, is the main budget guy with the council, he's always had access to Harris financial system. And for some reason that access has been denied this time, we don't know if it just expired, or if he's been removed or whatever, but we need to put him back to give him authority to get back on the Harris at a read-only permission level. So what I have here is a letter says, "To whom am I concerned? Please accept receipt of this as confirmation that Roy Reichman, member of the Park County Council, has access to the Park County Harris financial system in a read-only permission level." It'd be my motion that we approve this and give Roy access to the read-only level of the financial system.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let's do two of these. One to leave with the auditor, and one for them to get to Roy when he... Ah, in fact, I'll just take it home and I'll scan it to him. Let's just do it that way, that'll be fine. Because when he's doing the budget stuff, he has to have access to all those numbers. The sign out front that we approved, the $3,055, that's going to be paid for, our council's transferring money to pay for that. That would come out of the, our economic development line, so we have money there available to do that. We do need to approve a transfer, or expenditure. If you remember, we authorized sending the cars' requests to Barnes and Thornburg to look at, to make sure it was written correctly. We did not know at the time if it would or would not be reimbursable expense from cars, it is not a reimbursable expense from cars. So we have enough money, $5,000, and our litigation fee has not been used. So the recommendation was that we use that $5,000 from our litigation fee, that would zero that out for the year, and that would pay for that bill. So that'd be my motion also, that we do that.
Okay, I'll second that.
You okay with that? All right, in all favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so however you guys need to make notes for that, take that $5,000 for the...
There is one question, because there was a, Chris O'Brien's been working on the 8905, because there's been charges put in there, we need to reduce it down for the payroll.
Right, he's working on that.
Stuff to be moved over, he was wanting to use that litigation money for the legal fees that was done in 8905 for something. Chris would have to answer more questions.
Well, he's the one, he's the one suggested that we do this, it must fit in with what his plans are then, so yeah, good.
And maybe the same thing.
It is.
The Barnes and Thornburg was $5,000.
Yes, okay, good, that's it. I love it when we're all on the same page, that's a good thing.
I just wanted to make sure.
You're doing good, doing good, Andrew, you keep it up.
Remember that for minutes?
Uh, yep, you had to, you get her in there.
Yeah, I'll put that in there.
Okay, next thing we have to look at is to review the proposed transient merchant license paperwork. As I look at it, nothing's changed on it, other than the dates. It still requires that be paid before September 30th, after September 30th, all vendors applying for each email. That is always confusing to me, and I see these in all kinds of documents, it says after September 30th. So if they get it September 30th, they're not subject to a late fee, but if it's after September 30th, then they are subject to a late fee.
Where are you seeing that at?
Um, very last box, at the bottom of the page.
Those $50 after shampoo, that's right?
Okay, and the only other things highlighted up in the second box are that for handmade, we look at doing away with that, and we're not able to yet, because it's on statute.
We added qualified language that wasn't asked for this thing, that was added last conference.
Good, good. And it says, "A determination whether product is handmade shall be made on a case-by-case basis." And it also highlights right above that, that all, all products are handmade by myself. The reason handmade is so tough, I wish we could just do away with it. We get people come in, so I come in and I show you that I made this little hat, it's handmade, I don't want to pay the $100 for the fee, I want to come to the festival for free and let everybody else pay for my being here, so I don't want to pay the county anything for being here. So I handmade that, that's my product, and so you give me the hand exemption, you give me the TML, I go back, open up my booth, and I set up all these other things that I bought from China or wherever else and sell out of that booth. And unless you come there and you catch me, I'm clear. I've saved $100 out of my Bridge Festival, and that just irritates me and drives me nuts, but that's okay. Um, so that's what, that's, that's why that's highlighted, but it's always a constant struggle. And I hate it that it's a struggle for the auditor to be put on the hook of what is handmade, because you get those gray lines, you know? Like people who make candles, they didn't make the jar they put it in, they didn't make the wax, they didn't make the wick, but they did melt the wax to put it in the candle with the, with the thing, and this, now is that a handmade candle? Because it wasn't a candle before, it's a candle now. No, but then I had a guy challenge me once about maple syrup, I didn't make the maple trees, and I didn't make the, I didn't make the pans that I cook it in. So is that a handmade item? So, good question, don't know. That's why I'm not a lawyer.
Nobody can sell anything.
That's right, you couldn't, there would be no handmade thing, and I'd be okay with that. So everybody okay with this?
Yep.
We just need a motion to approve it as it looks, so...
I make a motion we approve the TML as presented to us.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, let me see if I had anything else, I think there were a couple things, this month's been kind of busy here, actually. Would you, who, I don't know, do you guys do the webpage, or are you responsible for putting stuff on the webpage from the...
Uh, we upload minutes of the meetings.
When you do that, if you would, it's brought to my attention that Bill Ferguson is still listed as being on the election board.
Oh, okay.
And he's not, he was replaced by Stacy Perrine, could you correct that for us?
Oh, give it a shot.
All righty, thank you. We have an issue coming up that we are going to have to face for the first time ever. As you know, we have a drainage board, and the drainage board is pretty much made up of a commissioner and the surveyor, but we don't ever have meetings, we've never had meetings, because we have no ditches, and in typical basis, the only things that drainage boards are responsible for are official ditches, we have none. We have an official ditch we share with the Beagle County, and long before I even came along, Beagle County took that over, and they're responsible for all actions in that ditch, so we don't even have one. We have an issue with some folks on a drainage ditch up by Belmore. So it's going to come to the commissioners, because since we don't have a board-appointed drainage board to handle those issues, it comes back to the commissioners. And the issue is, we just have a bunch of farmers who use this drainage ditch, it's been a community ditch for years and years, longer than anybody can remember. One guy remembers his parents paying into it to build it. Anyway, the guy at the bottom of the run doesn't want more water being brought into that ditch. Now, it's never been out on him, but he just doesn't want it, and he'd rather that they, where the, where first goes under the road, he would prefer that they put a pipe in and run that pipe all the way to 59, to run under 59, instead of running it through that open ditch. They, of course, don't want to do that, it's a lot, a lot more money, and they're not required to do that. So since they can't come to an agreement on how to do this, it's going to come down to a petition, then that petition will come to the commissioner now, because we are responsible for that, since we don't have a drainage board. So that petition then will just say that that drainage ditch needs to be cleaned out, dredged, because it is, it has filled in. So the way that work, that works, they'll bring the paperwork in, and I've got it here, if I want to take that code and read it. They'll bring the petition to us, we'll authorize the surveyor, the surveyor in a timely manner has to go out and make the judgment of whether there is a problem or not with a, with a impediment to water flow. And if there is, then we can authorize and require that that ditch be cleaned out. The petitioners and the respondent who has refused to do that, then, as long as we have two of the parties in agreement, whether that be the respondent, the petitioner, the surveyor, or us, then we can authorize it to be cleaned out, and that cost will be shared by everybody that drains into that ditch, and that cost is divided up, depend upon how many acres you have being drained and flowing into that ditch. So it's really pretty straightforward and cut and dry. Um, Jim, just the other, the respondent just doesn't want more water, they're heated, whether they do another way, but they're not going to be required to do it the other way, so once they start this petition process, I suspect that may all go away, but it may not, it may come down to us having to make a decision, say we're going to do that, then he can take it to court, and an attorney can appeal it, and the judge and they can either set that aside and make his own, or whatever they work, but just know that that's going to be coming up here before, before long.
All right.
The certified budget order is in, so the, the tax rates are in and have been approved. And we don't have to decide today, but we need to be thinking, and we need to talk to our sanitation officer about maple fair. Maple fair is pretty congested as well, and if things haven't changed COVID-wise, excuse me, something, there it is. COVID-wise, then we may have to look at either working with PCI on how they're going to handle the distancing and the masking, and have the health officer get involved and approve that, or we just cancel the use of the fairgrounds for, for that process. Hate to go down that path again, so let's hope we don't have to get there, but we just something we need to be thinking about, because it's going to be here in two months, it's the last weekend in February, so we're going to have to be making that decision. Now, this is a little different than Cover Bridge Festival, in that we don't have so many vendors buying so much inventory, making plans to come for the 10 days, all that stuff, it's pretty much just PCI and the people who are making maple syrup. Anyway, they just may, we may not be able to go there to sell it, have to sell it at our place. But there are many vendors who do sell their wares there too, so they have to have sufficient time to know not to make a whole bunch of stuff up ahead of time, if we have to do that. Hopefully they can work out some kind of a plan where they can do the spacing and the distancing, and maybe things will be backed off in a couple of months, because the vaccine will have been out for at least a month by then, so we just don't know. But I just want you to be aware, we may have to think about that as it comes along. All right, I think that is all I have, do you guys have anything new business-wise to bring up before we move on?
Nope, I think you've covered everything.
All right then, let's go on to departmental reports, and so first up is Chris.
Hello.
How are you?
All right, I just came here to get you an update, I sent the five-year plan.
Good.
To the DNR. They reviewed it and they sent it back to you, and you have until April 15th to make changes on it.
Okay.
And this is to get more grants and stuff to the parks.
Were they okay with it?
I had to make some amendments.
Okay.
And then make sure my park board's legal and everything like that. And I just sent, resubmitted one more time and then if it gets accepted, get grants and stuff.
Okay.
Just wanted to give you guys a heads up.
Appreciate that. Were the requests they made reasonable things?
There wasn't too many things I had to change. There's a couple of areas they wanted me to add or, you know, widen out a little bit, but it's not too bad, honestly.
Okay. So, you didn't really say no to anything, but if you wanted to do this, you had to do something more to it?
Yeah, they had to approve. They had suggestions and stuff. That's what I had to do.
Gotcha, okay. Now, why is it we need their approval? What role do they play in our park board doing that?
That is actually...
For this conservation order?
The park board has to be legal per the DNR.
Okay.
And...
DNR approves all park boards?
I guess so. I've never had a park board before.
Do you know that's the way it works?
Not the town alone. I don't know about county park boards.
That's never come up before. I've never heard that before.
Yeah, I didn't even know about it myself until you said something about that, making sure that they were legal under terms of service and stuff like that.
Okay.
So, I should be submitted on that. But basically, why I sent it to them is because there was potential for grants and stuff.
From them?
From the DNR.
Oh, okay. Oh, that makes sense.
So, that's why I sent it.
That's why they want to make sure the board's legal and make sure it's all right.
That's why I got followed up.
That makes sense. Now, I didn't understand if you're seeking grant in other place. What's it to them if you're doing the grant? But DNR grants, that makes sense then, okay.
Yeah, so just cross it all...
Sure.
Cross all the Ts, don't all the Ts.
Do they work with you pretty well?
Oh, yeah.
Grants are pretty good with them?
They're really nice. I sent it to him last week, actually, and he already got it back to me within about a week.
Speaking on that, how are we doing sediment-wise? Are we filling up very quick? How deep is that lake?
It's about, I think the deepest part's about 22 feet.
Okay.
It spits really well. It drains really nice. Last spring, we had some problems with some logs and stuff getting washed into the drainage pit there. But the conservation corps came out and they cut it up.
Okay. Because if it impeded too much, probably get too much settlement then coming out of it and then throw one in.
Kind of murky.
Right, yeah. And all that's going to settle in.
Other than the spring, you really don't have to worry about too much. We got some mild erosion down there by the bow ramp. And that's kind of why I wanted to get these grants is to get that riprap.
Riprap in there, okay.
Yeah, prevent the erosion.
And I don't know if that's... Randy, you would know. Since that's county property, can we apply that riprap? Can we have that purchase and we apply it? Or does it have to come from a higher...
We can, but I don't know on the grant.
Yeah.
They want a contractor to do it.
Okay, we typically can't compete with a contractor using tax dollars.
Yeah.
But since that's county property, we probably can. But DNR may prefer that you hire that out to someone else so there's no liability from anybody else.
Oh, yeah.
So, that may be it, okay?
And you can if it's your property.
Yes, your property, yeah.
Getting the approval of the grant.
I figured you probably could, yeah.
You just can't other people's property.
Right. But we'd rather you seek your grant to have somebody else do it so we don't have the expenditure of time and labor and material and men due to all that stuff, yeah. Okay. Anything else you need from us?
Nope.
You guys got any questions?
Nope.
All right. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, yes.
Julie's not here. Chris O'Brien, holler him back there, would you? See if he needs us. Thanks. Hi there. Anything you need to share with us?
We're going to finish up the second Harris Fund request and hopefully that will go through. I don't find on the edge whether or not that's going to work, but...
That document you're going to need me to sign, is that something we need to approve?
No, it's the same document that we've been signing all along for the Harris Fund.
It's just when they put in submissions.
I can show you copies if you'd like it.
No, I just didn't know if they need to be part of that.
So, basically, the state came out and said, gave an allotment of Park County about $55,000 for safety awareness. And this would be money that people use to make flyers and stuff like that. Also goes to help people who have enforced or implemented developed public safety plans, which we have. So, what we were looking at doing is recouping some of the costs that we spent for the health nurse and for the courthouse security and then for some of the additional payments that some people in the health department have gotten. So, I've already gotten. So, we're just going to try to bring that money back from Indianapolis, back here in Park County. And then, and I'm just working on the paperwork now.
Okay.
And Henry's looking forward to spending more time with Beagle over there.
Not a problem, Chris. Not a problem.
All right. Thanks, sir.
We worked well with it.
Appreciate it. All right. Justin back there? Nope. All right, Randy, you're up. We're doing good. How are you doing?
All right. Yeah, you don't have a cardboard box tonight. We're doing great.
No, it's just not a phone call. First thing we did, advertised for sealed bids on the trade-in dump truck that we had. Got two of those. Let's record those, you guys.
Sign that with you, would you? I'll send that to you on a little bit of a morning. Second, you sign. You got them both or just one?
I just got one.
Yeah. Oh, you got the other one. That's okay. You keep it. I'll get another one here and I'll just scan it and send it to you. Okay. Ruth, will you sign that and we'll get the same thing and I'll scan that and agree.
Nine-year bids, 5526.00 for unit 30, truck 2003 International.
5526.
Yeah.
Ed?
Yeah. Randy Foxworthy, 5150.
Okay. Looks like tonight's...
Okay.
We get the new truck. We'll make that available to you.
For those who don't know, when we have a piece of equipment to sell like that, we'll do it by sealed bid with a date. And so, what we've done is we open those sealed bids in public meeting like this so everybody can see what the bids were and then who the winner was. And it goes to the highest bidder, then it's all transparent that way.
Is that single axle or tandem?
tandem.
I thought it was.
The next thing I have is I've got the...
You know those things are kind of hard to manipulate like that, you know? Starts getting on you.
Got the contract, the thin dog from the Community Crossing Grant. And they really only want one signature on the grant. And I've drawn a... We had to do this last year. The other two prosecutors, more or less, could have used the ration to sign it.
Okay. What's the total on that? 983 something?
938, 990, 76.
So, our share of the Community Crossing's grant is $938,990.76. Is that everything we asked for?
Yes.
Okay, so everything we submitted last year as far as pavings, those will all be taken care of in this coming year.
That's leaving us 300 and 50, I think, or something like that.
Okay, good.
So, here's this one. Dan and Ruth would like to sign that. And I need that back.
They do sign that or don't sign that?
Ruth, your name's not on there.
Okay.
I burst on this one. You sign the other one.
Okay.
Send just the red one, give him authority to sign it.
So, you said you only want one?
Oh, I got you. I got you.
You and I both sign that one. And then Jim signs the other one.
Yeah, got you. Be Dan on there too then. Yeah, I got you. Got to have proof that you okay me signing the paper.
We'll get you guys a copy of this.
Okay.
This is the original standard.
Right. Danny said you'd get us copies.
Yeah. And this is the grant. I re-taxed it. I emailed this to you the other day. Board will plate grant.
And that's what I need to sign there, yeah.
Those kind of things, but it's not really bargaining room on the language. You're either signing.
Yeah, take it or leave it, yeah.
They don't even want a test signature on it, so.
Okay.
And I have a new low weight trailer. Pretty nice one. It cost a little, but maybe $30,000 for one. But I was stuck. Oars are getting old and couldn't even haul the chipper around on it. Liked about three feet to get back up the truck and put the chipper on. That's not good on the chipper, the hydraulic motors.
Yeah.
Rode it everywhere. That's not good on me either, so. Need the signature on the title here, Jim.
Yeah. Why don't you just come down there and slide down it? Say you passing this stuff around.
We've got four places to sign. Thank you. And Dan, I haven't, I haven't got your stop sign changed yet, but we'll get it.
No big issue. It's gone. They'll be down there putting others up. There's no reason for a mixed special trip. It looked to me like one of the first ones they put up, somebody actually tried to wrench it all the way around. I figured it would be...
The one behind the tree?
Money out the wood... No, not the one behind the tree. Another one.
Yeah, okay.
Putting up the emergency... They have signs on some of the bridges now.
Good.
We got them in the other day. Started putting them up.
How'd your budgets hold up this year?
Good.
Good. Good. Hope it understays like it is and we... Goodbye with that.
$20,000 in prospective fund blades. So, we ordered like there's 10 sets or 11 sets blade, greater blades.
Good.
So, we can cover the money.
Good.
Got some other things for you.
Good. Let's hope it goes well. It'd be nice if we could set you free and pave some more like you did this year. That'd be great.
Try and do buyouts and extra stuff.
Yep, yep.
So, we have it for next year and I have some money.
Yep. Anything you need from us?
Uh, no, I don't think so.
Okay.
Back to patching the gears.
Okay.
We'll patch it tomorrow.
Well, I hope you have a good Christmas. Got to have you say aye.
Okay, I will. You guys have a wonderful Christmas.
We will. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Enjoy your Christmas. Hopefully, we won't have any snow or anything and everybody can stay home. Just going to get cold, I think.
Yeah.
Anybody have anything additional? I think it was a good call from public. Pam, you cooking gizzards down there yet? See, you said that last time, too. Well, okay then.
You guys were expanding last summer.
Yeah. I can cook lots, but it's like huge.
I make a motion with you.
I'll second.
With you.